If not, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or standing, motion carries. Item F, personnel items, I'd call for a motion to accept the personnel report as submitted.
Motion.
All right, any, there's a, it's moved, is there a second? And I didn't hear it because it sounds like you say it's came through at the same time.
Well, second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Anything to separate, to discuss, or to want separately? If not, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed or standing? Motion carries? All right, Capitol Project Committee. Bob?
Yeah, we haven't really, we haven't met yet, and no, Dan, we had talked about it, huh?
So, I think, I think what we said is, um, once we get, um, the information back from Troutman and Turner, who are working together, to kind of put together a draft scope with some of that, the items that we think we can add back, that, that's when we'll get together. So they're working on that now, probably, uh, mid-January, we'll be able to get together and do that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Nothing further.
Policy Committee. Uh, Bob, did you have more?
No, I'm good. Nothing further.
All right, Policy Committee?
Nothing to do there.
Well, we have the sec, we have the second reading. Uh, so, this is, it's already been moved and seconded, coming from a standing committee, so we will be voting on the adoption of the policies. The second reading of Policy 5570, which is for financial accountability, 5572 for the Audit Committee, 5676 for privacy and security for student data and teacher and principal data, uh, Policy 6550 for leave of absence, and Policy 7155 for remote learning. All those in favor of accepting those policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or standing? Motion carries? All right, um, fundraisers, we have some things that are informational right there. They have Grinch Night, which is virtual. Uh, okay, Ex-Official Student Members Report, this is our cone.
Um, yeah, so the first thing I'll talk about is, um, a couple weeks ago, um, National Honor Society did this, like, project where we, um, made Thanksgiving cards and, um, gave them out to all the students, um, in the district and faculty, and they also, like, mailed them out to, um, all the virtual students as well, and they were received really well. Um, people really liked it, and definitely, like, um, boosted a lot of spirits because they were, said, like, positive messages, like, "We're grateful to have you a part of our Falcon family," and those kind of things, and it was just, I thought it was, like, a really nice thing that we did, kind of, you know, make people feel better, because we're not really as connected this year, which kind of stinks, given everything going on, but, um, since that went so well, um, National Honor Society also wants to do a similar thing again around, like, Valentine's Day and, like, the springtime, where, like, we can also, um, send out, like, positive messages to, um, kids in the elementary schools and, like, um, the middle school, because, like, we did it in the high school, so to get it out to the other kids, that'd be really nice, and I feel like, um, elementary students would really like getting messages from, like, high schoolers, um, that would be cool for them. So that's one thing that's really nice that, um, went on. Um, also, um, I guess, right now, in the high school, um, there's Spirit Week going on, um, for Christmas, so we have Pyjama Day coming up, which is hopefully a good one. Um, so that's going on now, and it's just another way we're trying to make things a little better, um, right now, but, um, one thing that kind of stinks is the news about, like, winter sports, um, that's, like, unfortunate, um. You know, especially if, like, you're a senior year last year, and it being, like, postponed, like, indefinitely, and you don't really know what's going on, and that's tough. Um, but hopefully, things get better in the future, and maybe spring sports, things look better. Um, also, um, what else? Oh, for school lunches, I've been noticing, like, people are, um, definitely taking advantage more. Um, like, when I'm waiting in line, like, the lines have gotten a lot longer, like, I have to wait a lot longer, um, so I think that's a really good thing, like, people are really, um, supporting the food program and taking advantage of that opportunity, um. And also, I know, like, um, now that we're, like, in the yellow zone, we're doing, like, the testing. Um, so, I actually, me, my brother and I are getting tested, um, we, um, I think it's Friday, but it set up really well, like, they called my mom and told, and it seems pretty easy, and she's gonna get tested during my lunch, um, so that's, it was handled well, and it seems pretty simple, so that's good also, yeah, all I really have to say, so.
Good, uh, any questions for our student press? All right, thank you, Marissa. All right, um, just a few things from mine for the presence report, uh, the superintendent and I are talking numerous times throughout the week with, with, obviously with COVID and all the different changes, as we, as some days we talk in the morning, and things have changed three or four times by the end of the day, um, uh, we're going through things, I just want to let parents know, you know, we are here with your concerns. Um, I know that there's a lot of concerns because of how many people are quarantining. Um, I, I think that one of the biggest things that people don't realize is that quarantining in some of the situations, because of the contact tracing, it doesn't mean that there is, like, a, Rick, an exorbitant amount of cases. I know some people really thought that, you know, well, you hear, like, there's, like, a hundred and twenty people quarantining in a high school with students and staff, yet that's because of maybe three or four cases. Um, you know, it's, we have to, you have to put that part in this perspective. So when, yes, you go, you go through the halls of the school, and this is, this was one of those kids down the street were saying, it's like, we actually like when some of the people are quarantined, because there's less people they have to worry about walking through the halls with, so. Um, as I said, we don't get used to that, because we're, we're not gonna be doing that when things return to normal. But, you know, again, we, we do hear your concerns that there, I know people are worried, that's why the superintendent has, has, you know, allowed this change that was just put out there. You know, if, if you do feel that, you know, you, you have to take your personal family situation in, in, in context, and if it's, if it's time for you to go to the, to the remote model as, the virtual model, as opposed to being the hybrid uh, in the secondary level, you know, this, this is that time to make the change, same thing with the, you know, at the elementary level. I'm pretty sure the superintendent will speak more on that piece, uh, also with his report. I, I know disappointment, Marissa, uh, from all the student athletes I've talked to about what's happening with winter sports. You know, I'm hoping that something can be salvaged throughout the, you know, the remainder of the year, especially when you, you know, we hit the springtime. Um, but I know that, that's, that your same sentiments are shared across the state from many, many, uh, you know, student athletes from there. Um, obviously, it's, it's not easy, I, I still feel that we are very fortunate that we were able to get in these, the false course that we weren't, were able to, and it got through that piece, so, I mean, we do, if you have to look at, um, you know, a positive out of everything that has happened, that, that was able to, to go on. So, um, again, uh, parents, feel free to just reach out to the superintendent, if you, you know, it's, it's a lot easier if you go right to the superintendent with questions, or their building principal, as opposed to asking them on social media, where the answers you get will possibly not be even anything near what your answers, you know, should be, so, uh, please remember, reach out, the superintendent's phone is always, always accessible, he's, you know, very accessible for questions, and, um, that's, that's where they go to with those. So, with that, we'll turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. I want to start with a real positive, and, and that is a huge thank you to our families already. Um, we started making phone calls today, and Marissa touched on it a little bit, she probably did as good of a job as I really could have done or need to do. But, um, we've reached our fa, uh, we've started reaching out to our families and booking, uh, times for our testing. The testing is, um, the 22nd, 23rd, and 29th. The list that we're using is the Google Form list that, um, we created a few weeks back, when we thought at that time that we might go yellow, and we're obviously yellow now, and, um, that, whatever I say now, our, um, designation begins on the 21st. So, what that requires is that from the 21st, we then count fourteen days forward, and within that fourteen-day block, we have to make sure that twenty percent of our in-person students and staff are tested. Um, at this point, with the number of people who said they would be tested, staff and students, you know, combined, we should have over our twenty percent mark, and I, I just, I'm, I'm very, um, just impressed with how, um, our families have responded, they, they recognize, they realize, for us to stay open, we need twenty percent of our population to be tested. As long as our number, our positivity rate, is below the regional average, we will be able to continue, and we'll move out of our yellow zone. Okay, that's how that works. So again, hu, a huge thank you, a couple more things on the testing. The testing times are seven until, um, se, seven o'clock until three o'clock on the 22nd, 23rd, and 29th. The calls are being made, and we're booking people within fifteen-minute increments, okay? So we're gonna really ask that people get there in that time. Now, we're, we're focusing on the 22nd, 23rd, on the high school, middle school, and then on the 29th, the focus will be the elementaries. We really felt as though, um, many of our families would be interested in accompanying their elementary kids over for testing. We know that, um, many of our parents, on the other hand, if they have a secondary student, might be inclined to just allow them to go and get the test. I just want to reiterate that the testing, there's two different nasal swabs, this is the less invasive, it's just up in the lower part of the nasal cavity, it's five twists in each nostril, um, I've had it done myself, it was really more of a kind of a tickling sensation than anything else. Um, so, so that's where we're at with testing. Uh, let, let, let me just stop there, aboard, any questions on testing, uh, Mr. Stack, anything that I missed on the testing?
Nice job of encapsulating everything, it's just, uh, again, kudos to our entire, really, school community on stepping forward for the testing itself. Certainly all the help that I've been given to, uh, make this come to fruition, uh, couldn't have been done without the building leadership and, and the building teams, so, great job.
Dan, I have a question. Uh, if, I guess the results take about fifteen minutes, will the student or staff, uh, do they leave and get notified, or do they hang around for the fifteen minutes?
Great question, Rick, they're gonna leave, they're gonna leave, they'll go back to wherever, you know, if, if they're going home, because it's the 29th, they'll head home, and we'll give them a call if they're, if they're positive, um, or we'll have them go back to their class. Remember, that the understanding is this, they were in class to begin with, right? They were there, so we're just, we're gonna send them back, and then we'll call. What we're seeing throughout the region, with the people who have already done this testing, is incredibly low positivity rates. We're expecting that to be the case in our, in our district.
And ultimately, do those numbers get, uh, passed on to the county, to the state, to both?
They do, Tom, do you want to talk?
They do get passed on to both, they get passed on, obviously, to the county, we're gonna share those, um, so that the tracing agencies and the school liaisons that are working with the tracers have them, but they also get put into the daily COVID, school report card data, where we have to, um, attest to the fact that we did do the testing on the site, and also make note of any of those that were positive.
What other testing questions?
I guess my question would be, if, if we did get a positive, how does that play out?
So those students would, just like we do if we get one during the day, they would be, they would go down to, um, the separate room that we have for, um, students who are positive, parents would be notified, they come, get them, they come home.
Okay.
Good.
Any other questions on that one? Okay. Uh, next, uh, as Mr. Sable mentioned, this is the week for people to make a decision for Weeks 21 through 30. Okay, so, you have until Friday at five o'clock, families do, to make a decision about Weeks 21 through 30. We will then be giving families another opportunity, about halfway through the, the next marking period, to make a decision about the last marking period. Okay?
Dan, a question on that, since the numbers are really publicized through the county, of the people that's already answered the survey, have you seen much changing?
So, so far, with, no, uh, you know, I, I gotta tell you though, Rick, the, the last time I looked at it was yesterday. Um, and, yeah, it was yesterday, midday, maybe morning, and there were about ten people.
Ah, okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, it could have shot up today, and obviously, we have the rest of the week, but that's where it was at. Any questions about the change of program form?
Just want you to clarify, then, that there's gonna be one more change, that they're gonna be able to?
There will be one more opportunity for families to change, I know we've, and we've talked about this before, you know, when we get to that point, um, we'll obviously have to be very, um, sure that we have spaces for everybody that we would move back in, and I'm saying that very optimistically, because it's very possible, I hope, that the fourth quarter, that, um, we're in a much better spot than we are now with positivity rates, more people who have been vaccinated, uh, a larger number of people interested in coming back. We have to make sure that we have spots for them, okay, as we move people around and some staff around, so. Um, but yes, are, we are going to allow people to fill out that change of program form one more time, and then we'll take that request and hopefully be able to honor it.
Okay.
Okay, my next topic is athletics, again, Marissa, I think Marissa had my report out of time, because she, she touched on this. Um, we did, um, find out actually today, that winter sports were actually pushed back, the, the low-risk winter sports were pushed back to January eighteenth. The moderate to high-risk, it's still, um, up in the air, okay, there's no, nothing decided on that yet. The other thing that, that happened is that they canceled the indoor track, indoor track and field, I don't know if it's easy. Okay. I want to reiterate, food service, please take the meals if you're interested. I, I do want to say this, if you've seen different people, for family members, excuse me, who have been picking up food, you've seen different people probably handing out the food. I, I just want everybody to understand that, um, we have had, um, administrators filling those, that gap. Because of, um, quarantining, we're down-staffed everywhere in our district. So we're plugging holes, as you can imagine, and as I think a lot of other businesses are, um, the best that we can with everyone we have. So, uh, we want to make sure, because we want to make sure that our food service can continue, so we're helping them out with the things that we can do that are not cooking, right? So that we can make sure that we can, um, keep our schools open, because without food service, we can't run. Um, I, I do want to touch base on, um, something that's happening, uh, nationally, that's very important right now, and hopefully will be, um, maybe wrapped up by the end of the week. Sunday. There's, there, there's been a bipartisan bill that's being worked on for that relief. Um, I, I know that, um, my counterparts throughout the state in New York, that are superintendents, are waiting, hoping, um, that that federal money includes money to the uh, state and local governments, so that the state governments can pass that money back on to school districts to help, um, with, with, with this, uh, with the COVID relief, so we're, when, when it's voted on.
Hey, Dan, I'm, I'm, yes, uh, if there is money that goes to the state, is there a formula of how much we get, is it, is it under nor, nor, normal procedure, or a lot of it going to the big cities, uh, up to New York City?
Great question, part of that is how it's earmarked, so does the federal government say that it has to be used in a particular way when they give it, or not? Um, i, in the end, if they're, at least in our state, what's been talked about is that that's the money that would be used to backfill some of the money that's been withheld from districts to this point, and I believe it also will help fill the 2021, 22 budget gaps that we're going to see because of COVID. Thanks. Great question. The, uh, last item, and I touched on it just a minute ago, a little bit, and it has to do with staffing. We, as a district, and, and, I know the districts are doing the same, but it, I can speak for ours, we're doing everything that we can right now to stay open. Obviously, the positivity rates in our county have, have gone, have been fairly high the last couple weeks. Um, however, the positivity rates in our schools have not matched that, they've been lower. Still, every time one person is COVID-positive, the number of people that need to be quarantined is significant. Okay, it, one case can take out an entire cohort in an elementary school. One case can take out fifteen to twenty-something, uh, personnel in a high school, middle or, middle school, because they jump from class to class. So, um, I think everybody needs to understand that, you know, some tough decisions might need to be made if the positivity rates continue to go up, simply because the quarantining is leading to us not having the staff to cover our buildings, okay? Um, if we get to that point, we have put some contingency, you know, do we have some contingency draft plans in place on how we would deal with that? Um, it's important to just put this out there and share this, we probably look at, and my recommendation is that we look at the high school first, then high school, middle school, then elementary school last. In other words, if we have to move any groups remote, we do it in that order, because the older the student, the more experienced they have with technology, the easier, not easy, the easier it is for them to make the transition. Okay, and we would do that for short periods of time, if we need to, um, and we would pull the additional staff from, let's say, the high school, to move over to help us out in other buildings. We're, we're just, we're, we're really getting to that point where do we have enough staff with all of our subs, moving other staff members around to fill these holes? And, and it's just, it's very tight every single day, is what I want you to know. So, at the end of this week, we might make a decision about next week, and over the break, we might make a decision about the first week or two of January, and I just don't want anybody to be, to be surprised. I don't know that people would be, um, because of the cases and, and if us, but it is something that we're looking at, and we're looking at closely. Um, again, it's not because we have explosions, thank goodness, at this time, in our schools of COVID-positive cases. It has to do with the number of staff members who are quarantined as a result of the limited positive COVID cases. Okay, any questions on that, comments? Okay, so, so my last thing then is this, um, it's going to be a really unique, um, holiday season, I think, for many, and for some, that holiday season's already started. Uh, I just hope that everybody has a very safe and happy holiday. Um, please use discretion, maybe more this year than ever, with the size groups that you're with, because I'm really looking forward to coming back in 2021, and hopefully having all of us together, uh, sooner rather than later. So the thing, whatever you can do to help us out with that, um, this holiday season, please do, but happy holidays to everyone.
You too, Dan.
You too, Dan.
All right, moving on to the reports to the board. Uh, we have our tax collector report, it's listed on there, and I'd like to call for a motion to be resolved upon the recommendation, recommendation of superintendent, that we approve this resolution, uh, for based on the collection of taxes.
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
Any questions about that, any discussion? And then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or standing? Motion carries? All right, we also have our Budget Development Canal, Calendar there. Uh, Dan, do you just want to take that, highlight a couple things that you have on there?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll pass that off to Allison, Allison, can you talk a little bit about our budget calendar?
Yeah, let me just see if I can bring it up here, because I have my own computer tonight, not the work one.
Hey, Ryan, can you share that, please? Are you able to?
Uh, I don't have hers.
Um,
I can allow her to share it.
If you can allow me to share, I have it up right here.
Yeah, sure. There you go, you should be able to.
There you go.
Okay. There we go, so, um, right now, we are, uh, okay, the sixteenth, approving the Budget Development Calendar. I'm gonna have the budgets ready for the principals and directors, uh, this week, hopefully, um, so that, that they can begin in putting it into our EnVision system. Um, and then, uh, we'll begin our Board of Ed budget discussions on the sixth. Um, we have our initial review and the discussion of the tax levy limit calculation on, uh, February third, and the, uh, March first is the, uh, due date for the tax lev, the limit this year. Um, on the third, March third, we'll have, um, additional budget discussions and get more into revenue and fund balance projections, and review of the departmental budgets, um, and then, uh, the Board of Ed and budget discussions will continue through April, and we have our four budget notices that have to be, uh, published, are listed there on that, um, calendar, and then uh, the last day to file for petitions for Board of Ed candidacy is April nineteenth. Um, the ballot order is then chosen on the twentieth. The adoption of the property, uh, tax report card and budget will be on April twenty-first, and that is when we will then make the budget available to the public, uh, in hard copy. Uh, and then, the budget hearing is scheduled for May fifth, and our annual, uh, budget vote is, um, May eighteenth.
Hey, Allison, quick question, um, about the petitions, um, with the twenty-five signatures, I know it's, it's supposed to make a percentage of who voted last year, that, is that waived this year?
I have not heard anything, Maureen, maybe you could, uh, chime in a little, as district clerk, have you heard anything through the clerks?
I have not, not yet. We haven't gotten any updates.
If we hear stuff, we'll, of course, bring it to you to let you know, but right now, we haven't heard anything on that, no changes.
Okay, yeah, because I know it used to be a percentage of what, who voted, and I, we had a lot of votes last year.
Mm-hmm. So.
It would be a percentage of over four thousand votes, so.
Right, well, Rick and I, Rick, and I, we, at the one year we ran, if you remember, that was, it, it, the year preceding was the most number of votes, voters we had come out to vote, and I think we needed, uh, almost a hundred signatures to get on the, get on the ballot that year.
Yeah, you're right, and, you know, I'm, I'm a little surprised at that, because in the normal political arena, uh, with the primaries last January, they lowered the amount of signatures for, we'll say, councilmen and supervisors and stuff like that, they're way low. Uh, I don't know if they plan on doing it for the school board, but I don't see why they wouldn't, but I don't know.
Yeah, if we hear anything.
Otherwise, I think.
That's the thing is, you know, they are encouraging us not to go door-to-door, but, um, so that's it.
You could have about two hundred signatures needed, and with a percentage of votes, if, you know, if that holds true. Oh, yeah.
Well, if we hear more, we'll, we'll definitely let you know.
All right, we appreciate that. All right, uh, any other questions then, from the board members about the Budget Development Calendar?
Hey, do we have that, did it send that to us?
Dan sent it to us, uh, before the meeting. All right, um, Ryan, I will stop sharing that in. All right, then, and, um, all those in favor of accepting the Budget Development Calendar, please say, oh, is there a motion to accept the Budget Development? is there a motion to accept the budget development calendar, that's, that's not jumped to?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, post-restaining, motion carries. Alright, any items for board discussion? Alright, um, any old business? Any new business? And I just wanna say, uh, thank you to Mr. Lalanich, uh, from many people in the public for allowing the, the fourth change. I know that has put a lot of pressure off of, um, a lot of them who are, are still planning on keeping their children home for this, this third choice time, but see hope with the possibility of a vaccine and, you know, maybe things quieting down and, uh, with the, the numbers front um, come that last marking period so that they could, you know, give their kids, and the school year is a little bit more normal, see, you're being back in school or so, so. Uh, thank you, Mr. Lalanich, and for you and your staff for, you know, coming up with a way of, of being able to do that. Knowing the limitations of that is possibly, is space, you know, knowing if that's gonna be the, the big piece of it, driving, driving factor. Uh, one question I had, uh, the superintendent was, has our busing been impacted by any of the other districts coming back yet at all with, uh?
Not yet, because, because we really haven't had to reach out and utilize those, that, that, the outside transportation. Very rarely, right at the beginning, we'll be having some issues, but it's been, it's been pretty good. The, the combination of the number of people who are in the virtual program, with the hybrid has made it possible for us to, you know, really transport. But it's tight every day there, and everyone, um, in that office that is able to drive, uh, you know, who has a license to drive a bus, is driving pretty regularly right now.
Okay. I, I'm hearing very good things about our staff, I mean, people are very appreciative with everything going on, the amount of communication, the professionalism. So again, um, you know, thank you to all the staff also and the faculty in the building district. Alright, um, uh, board member comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, well, I know Dan has hit on it a number of times, Steve just did. I wanna thank Dan, the entire staff, whether it be administrators, um, the teachers, the SRP people. I mean, to work under the conditions they're working and maybe some fears is pretty remarkable. And, and reaching out to the people, I happen to be in a town hall today and, uh, doing some business and two girls come running in and, and I was in a separate room, kind of all somewhat excited. They just got the emails about the testing and they were starting to ask some questions, so. I, I, you know, I think you, everyone has done a fabulous job, and I, and I know you've heard it from many other board members, but I, I just need to hit it on it again, and I wanna wish everyone a safe and happy holiday and, and, uh, hopefully everyone can stay safe and enjoy. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I pretty much reiterate what Rick just said, I mean, the teacher staffing, Dan, your administration's done a very excellent job keeping our kids in school. Um, I also like to thank the community for helping, it's, takes all of us to make this happen. And by volunteering, it's given us the opportunity to keep the kids in school, so I appreciate the community coming together with us to get, to make this happen. I also like to wish everybody, uh, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Any other board member comments? Alright, very good then, if there's no other comments, I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, is there a second? Alright then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Good one.
Alright, motion carries, we're adjourned.